City Council, May 20th meeting is hereby called to order. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And the pledge? The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members have received a copy of the regular minutes from May 6th. Are there any revisions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, item number 3336, Washington Landing. I actually voted against that.
Any more provisions or comments? We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Before we go into public comment, I do have some special recognitions today and we'll do those and then we'll go into public comment. We do have some people I know here with us today. The first thing I wanted to do here is that we had City Manager Daryl Hennessy put together some certificates for the council members. One, thanking you, many of you, for your years of service and also thanking you, it's been a tough year. So on behalf of the community, I want to thank this city council for the incredible work that you've done and know that you are very well appreciated. So this one here, this one's for Bob Traynor. This one is for Councilwoman Panessa. This one's for Councilman Zaglifa. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Bredingham. Councilman Tolbert. Councilman Hines. Congratulations. Councilman Coyle. Last but certainly not the least, Councilman George. Also today, yeah, congratulations. Also today, I have three keys of the city to give out for long-term service to the community of Charlestown. The first person I'd like to bring up, if they could step up by the flag with me, would be Kathy Skinner. She has been a longtime member of Charlestown Now, was there right in the beginning. She's run a business downtown, she continues to work with her family's law firm, and she's been an incredible advocate for downtown. The second key we have to give out today is for Councilwoman Ann Panessa, who has served on city council for 12 years, has also been a longtime founder of Charlestown Now. She was there from day one, has helped shepherd the organization to its Main Street status and continues to be an incredible advocate for change in Charlestown. So, Councilwoman Panessa? And the next key we have to give out today, this person was going to get a key someday, there's no doubt on that, but I just wanted to be the person to give it to them. So, the next person to get a key to the city is our Police Chief, Chris Kutter. All right. Well, I wish to congratulate every one of you on city council and everyone who received a key tonight. Your example is how people should handle their civic life and it's very much appreciated. Let's move on now to a public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed for members of the general public to share thoughts on items of interest in the community. Council members may ask clarifying questions or discuss procedural matters but are not permitted to discuss the policy merits of any issue unless it is scheduled for discussion. And we'll have three minutes. All right, first up, James Walsh and then Jacqueline Milliron.
Hello, I'm James Walsh. I live on Church Street in Charlestown. My sister and I own the Fund Shack in the Save-A-Lot Plaza and I just wanted to speak briefly about the blue petition. So while I haven't actually petitioned, I haven't spent a day on foot, we used our business as kind of a base for people to meet up, drop things off, a meeting place, to kind of cut down on travel time if needs be. And so, I just wanted to impress upon you the immense effort that I've seen from another perspective, one not being a petitioner on foot, but just the literally thousands and thousands of hours collectively that have been put forth by the petitioners. It's something I've never seen before. It's been, just, you know, we've had people come through the door frozen, we've had people come through, you know, from coming off the street petitioning, come through the door frozen, we've had people come through the door soaked in sweat, we've had people chased by dogs, and there have literally been thousands and thousands of hours of effort put forth by the teams that have been petitioning. And I've seen it day in and day out and I just want to, wherever this goes, I just want to impress upon you the immense effort that I've witnessed from, I think, a different perspective. And so, that's all I wanted to say, but I just thank you and just take it into consideration wherever this does go.
After Jacqueline Milliron, Chrissy Wymer.
Good evening. Couple of weeks ago, I interviewed for the CTUB board position. In that interview, I was asked about my willingness to provide information to the council. That said, at their last meeting, CTUB indicated that there may be delays in rate equalization. Contractually, CTUB has 10 years to accomplish rate equalization. However, there are two reasons that I believe the council should be made aware of that would contribute to any sort of delay deviating from CTUB's original optimistic projections. One reason for rate equalization delay, which has been speculated by CTUB, is the condition of the PSD system. The PSD system was not only evaluated by CTUB itself prior to asset acquisition, but it was evaluated by two professional state engineers who found it to be in relatively good condition. In fact, one engineer found that the inflow and infiltration of CTUB and Ranson to be worse than that of the PSD. I hope that this portrayal, I hope that with this portrayal of the former PSD system, that issues that have always existed and were identified are not ignored in the CTUB and Ranson system. Second reason for potential delays in rate equalization is mixing perceived maintenance costs with excess capacity, which does effectually subsidize for-profit developers. Each component of pump stations and even pipeline itself has life expectancies and should be outlined in strategic plans. Ratepayer and developer portions should be determined by a systematic maintenance and equipment accountability record. For example, most car batteries have an expected lifespan for replacement, so goes a sewer system. We can anticipate to replace something. I believe that this is perhaps how CTUB was able to operate a 50-year-old pump station without consideration of catastrophic failures. After speaking with two state officials with a continuing dialogue, I am confidently renewing my concern about Title 150 sewer rules and rules of engagement with developers having lasting effects on rates. Thank you. And if you have, I'm not going to give this to you tonight, but if you want any conversation of anything that I've said, here it is, proof. I would be more than happy to share it with anybody.
Excuse me, Ms. Milliron? One question for you. You said that, you said something to the effect of ransom PSD infiltration?
Inflow and infiltration.
What is that?
It's, in the utility business, it's called INI. And INI is when surface water enters into the sewer system, which is not a good thing. And what it does is it deceives the amount of capacity that you actually have, because you might have more than what, if you correct the INI. For example, in the city of Ranson, 2016, they had a manhole that had leaks. Manholes normally are the entrance of INI. They had a leak and it turned out to be that it was a stormwater drain that was plugged. The DEP came out, said clear the plug, everything went okay, but because of the backup in the stormwater, it entered in through the manhole system. So that is considered INI and you don't want to treat, it's very expensive to treat stormwater. You don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Next up, Chrissy Wymer and then Nancy Gregory.
Thanks. As always, thanks for having us this evening. And so, as I think that a lot of people will talk about the blue petition and some people have already, I'd like you to know that while it was a heavy lift, it was never a hard sell. I am honored, proud, and humbled to demonstrate this petition to you this evening. I am honored to be a part of this community that stands up for what it believes in and I am proud of that and I am happy that people opened their doors, they listened, and they shared their stories with us. I am humbled that the community entrusts us to carry their will to you. Because not everyone can come to these meetings. Not everybody has that privilege to come every two weeks and talk to you like I can. And so, those people have entrusted us to bring you their will. 1,537 people within the city limits of Charlestown signed this petition. They represent over 995 properties within Charlestown proper with over 1,200 property owners signing. Nine, sorry, excuse me, 1,191 of those have been definitively verified as owners of property within the city limits of Charlestown proper. And as I said, I was honored for them to open their door and share their stories with me and I'd like to share some of those stories with you this evening. Mr., well, I won't say his name, but the man who lives in the White House down on Belvedere, he's a nice gentleman, he shared with me, he said that he doesn't think that we should repeat the mistakes of the past. The atom bomb, turning away those who seek asylum, for a start. He told me a story about how his father worked at a Rockwell plant that was just on the other side of the river. And he told me that where they discharged their sewer into the river, there was nothing, nothing but white. Nothing grew, nothing was there, you knew exactly where it went, because as it flowed down the river, it stained the bed of the river white and nothing was there for years, even after they closed, which coincidentally, they did, right before he vested his retirement. He told me that he thinks we should have a different plan where Rockwell pays for a new sewer plant, so that when they leave, we're left holding more than just the bag, we have a sewer plant. And so, he thinks that we shouldn't build this super sewer to Rockwell, a super sewer to a place that will become an economic desert, a super sewer to nowhere, if you will. Mr. Gibbs, a wise man who lives down in Mordington, he told me that the people have the power here in the United States, we the people. He told me a story about when he lived elsewhere, down in Virginia, and another company, a very large company, much larger than Rockwell, wanted to build a plant there. They owned the land, they had the permits. And some brave public representatives said to them, sure, you can build your plant, we'll help you build your plant, but you can't have roads. You know why? Because the people control the roads and the people don't want your plant here, so build it, but you're not going to get roads. Maybe Rockwell shouldn't get a sewer, maybe they definitely shouldn't get a super sewer to nowhere, paid for by state funds. Lucy, I love Lucy. Lucy's down on Eagle Ave. I talked to Lucy yesterday. Lucy's beautiful. Lucy didn't want to sign and that's okay with me, because Lucy's given up. She doesn't just not want Rockwell, she doesn't want a lot of things. She doesn't want to have to pay a sidewalk levy, because there's no sidewalk in front of her house, just a big rut. She has to take a lot of energy and care to step over every day to get to her car. So she doesn't feel cared about and she certainly doesn't think you'll care about her signature on a piece of that paper. Is that what we want? Do we want people to think that we don't care about their will? So Lucy didn't sign, but she did say she'd pray for us and that makes me pretty happy because I'm pretty sure Lucy's good at praying. And so, I hope you think about that. I hope you hear Lucy's prayer. I hope you think about Mr. Gibbs' wisdom, maybe the plans of the man who lives in the White House down on Belvedere. But most of all, I hope you hear the people's will, the will of the people who do not have the privilege of coming here and standing before you, but were able to sign that paper. And the many people who weren't, either because they don't live here or because they simply weren't able to sign it, like Mr. Gibbs' wife, who's had a stroke and she can't sign. That's why Mr. Gibbs is not here. So I hope you hear their voices. I hope you give us a hearing and I hope you accept our petitions, because that's the people's will. Thank you.
After Nancy Gregory, Sharon Helman.
She's a hard act to follow. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm here about the blue petition. I did quite a bit of petitioning and I had some really amazing experiences. I met George Rutherford's granddaughter, such an honor, I love that man, and saw the house where George Rutherford was born. She brought me to the house. I met a woman who lived in her house for 72 years and remembers when her water bill was $1.50. There was no sewer, she had an outhouse. I met some people who were pro-Rockwell, who signed because they think that a $2.5 billion corporation should pay for its own sewer. Most people who signed were passionate about signing anything that opposed to Rockwell and I had to explain to them, well, no, this isn't actually going to get rid of Rockwell, but this is what it's about. There were those who don't sign petitions at all and others who don't get involved. Everybody was very respectful. My husband didn't want me to go out alone, but I mostly went out alone and I just had a wonderful time. I don't listen to him anyway, so. Let's see. And then there was, you know, the stats about how many people vote, a lot of people don't unfortunately, so I just want to give you one statistic. This was as of Friday in Ward 2, that's Nick Zaglaff's, Zagliffa's?
Zaglifa.
Zaglifa, sorry. And Mike Bredingham's Ward, in Huntfield, 50% of households signed, with 2/3 of those having more than one signature per house for a total of 298 signatures out of 368 houses. This company is not welcomed. I told people that the blue petition wasn't to get rid of Rockwell, unfortunately, but only to make the corporation pay for its own infrastructure. If the only way to get sewer service to these other communities who would benefit for the mega sewer is by floating this $16 million bond, then Charlestown has some serious problems. And if the state will float a bond for sewer only if it will serve Rockwell and other heavy industry, then there is something rotten in the state of West Virginia, which is not only an industry from Denmark. If these communities will benefit from a larger sewer, then give it to them, figure it out. Let Rockwell and the rest of the dirty industries that will inevitably follow at least pay for themselves. I implore you to set a hearing to consider this blue petition. Whether you believe the law requires it or not, over 1,500 people who live in the Charlestown city limits signed it and they deserve to be heard. Our officials from the state to the West Virginia DEP to our very own Jefferson County have failed us by allowing the heavy industrialization to take hold here. This is a small piece of the story, but certainly significant. Please do your jobs, listen to the people, reverse the vote on the sewer bond. Thank you.
After Sharon Helman, Megan Meehan.
Hi, my name is Sharon Helman and thank you for having us speak to you this evening. I knocked on some doors and spent time on several weekends at the petition table across the street to help collect signatures of Charlestown residents, homeowners, and freeholders in order to help give them the right to express their opinions on the petition issue. After all, they're being asked to provide funds for the infrastructure and expenses of Rockwell's production when no one really asks them about any of it until after the fact. And unfortunately, their opinions were ignored even then. They get no benefit from their contributions to Rockwell's factory. In fact, many expressed just the opposite, that they stood to lose much, their health, their livelihoods, their property values, and more. I'll tell you, one part of my experience collecting these signatures was being told by so many people how grateful they were to those who were collecting the signatures for the time and effort that they were putting in to allow the voices of the citizens to be heard. That was something I remember clearly from this experience, the sincere thanks and appreciation that people expressed for allowing them to have their voices heard. And I've come here to ask again, who do you represent? Your constituents, the people of Charlestown, or the interests of foreign companies whose interests are profit over people, certainly not the tourist or equine industries, agriculture, apiaries, and sadly, least of all, not the children of Jefferson County and their future? I know who you're supposed to represent, do you? And I believe it is your duty and responsibility to honor the will of the people who have signed these petitions and I urge you to set a hearing to accept the petitions.
Megan Meehan. And after Megan is Sharon Wilt.
As usual, thank you for having us here tonight to present the petition and, okay, so the county doesn't want heavy industry and I don't either. If we do have this, it's going to change the county for the rest of our lives. And it's going to come for generation on generation on generation. And it's not going to be good at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wilt? Lori Maloney. Sharon Wilt and Lori.
Thank you very much. We will be making this request as often as necessary, this request to hold a hearing. If it is not heard, we have plans to file a rate of mandamus. We will ask this of the next council. We will keep asking. We are not going to go away on this question because we really truly believe that this is what the people of Charlestown are asking of you to do. But specifically, we believe, we don't just believe, it is in the law, it is in the state code, 820-4, which deals with utilities and sewer systems, that a hearing is called for. And specifically, it is called for after a number of things have happened, after the ordinance was passed, after the lease agreement was passed, which was March 24th and April 26th. A hearing to hear public concerns and public protest should happen after, not in August, not in last year. But even if you disagree with the legality of this, we think that you should care, because your constituents care, because these are your people. As others before me have described, there are numerous stories from people in Charlestown that really, really deeply care about this. And I just want to give you some more numbers. Again, for Nick Zaglifa and Mike Bredingham, in your ward for Spruce Hill North, 63% of households signed this petition. Let me say that again, 63%, with 2/3 of those having more than one signature for a total of 121 signatures from that neighborhood. There happens to be only 121 houses in that neighborhood, so we have as many petitions from that neighborhood as there are houses. Again, 63% of households signed this petition. I think this is huge. 15, over 1,500 petitions, signatures from the city of Charlestown in a city that has, what, just under 6,000 people in it? It can't be overstated how enormous that is to get a return like that. And we don't see how you can ignore that. But again, we put this in your, on your plates to decide if you, how you want to treat those numbers. And the people who went and did the petitioning and who organized this had such tremendous heart. This woman here, who was a veterinary surgeon, would wake up at 4:00 in the morning and work on these clipboards and petition sheets so that the people had them. She'd work on them at 4:00 in the morning and go to work, leave for work at 7:00 and come back from work at 7:00 at night and then go out and meet with people and figure this out. And Lynn Dells and Susie Wymer and numerous other people who've really put a lot of heart into this, they did that because they care about the people in this county and this city. So please do the right thing legally and for your constituents and grant a hearing. Thank you.
Next up. Are you Sharon?
No.
Oh, sorry. Lynn Bochiari and Sarah Bennett Harper.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Bochiaro. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. As city council members, I'm sure you want to truly represent your constituents by acting in their best interests and reflecting the will of the community. As someone who's spent many hours collecting petitions concerning the sewer bond, I have had many conversations with Charlestown residents about it and about the future of our county. I'd like to share with you a little of what I heard. First of all, you should know that while most who signed were against Rockwell and did not want to support them in any way, there were also those who didn't object to Rockwell but felt Rockwell should pay for its own sewer infrastructure. The majority of residents, however, talked about how angry or upset they were that their elected officials brought heavy polluting industry to their family's clean, safe home. Many were especially incredulous about its location across the street from an elementary school. One woman told me a particularly sad story. She and her husband and children had lived in Arizona near a chemical plant. I'm sure it probably had all its required permits too. First, she was diagnosed with lymphoma and then her son developed thyroid cancer. They were glad when the opportunity arose for her husband to take a job here, but first, of course, they researched the area to be sure that this time, they would be living in a safe environment and they were happy to learn that it was. They were devastated to learn of the possibility of Rockwell and its toxins coming to Jefferson County. When we spoke, she and her family were preparing to put their home up for sale. She told me, we can't take the chance that we'll lose this fight and Rockwell will be allowed to build here. In closing, considering the overwhelming public opposition to this bond and the fact that to my knowledge, you never received accurate information about the volume and content of Rockwell's sewage, please reconsider your decision. I urge you to schedule a hearing and accept the protest petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Bennett Harper and Barbara Weber.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Bennett Harper and I would like to thank you for hearing my voice. I am here to urge this council to set a hearing to consider this protest blue petition. Whether you believe the law requires it or not, over 1,500 people who live in the Charlestown Whether you believe the law requires it or not, more than 1,500 people in Charlestown, your constituents, want their representatives to hear them. As a council member, it is your obligation to listen to the people and your duty to honor the will of the people you represent. I went door-to-door with teams in Norborn-Glebe Development and the households around Citizens Fire Company. When I was in Norborn-Glebe collecting petitions, many households had already signed them, had them hanging on the door waiting for us to retrieve them. One household was having a child's birthday party and invited us so that we could collect the forms from all the neighbors who were waiting for us to get their signed petitions. Homeowners wanted to shake our hands and thank us for what we were doing. These families spoke about wanting to live in a community where their children can grow up and have clean air and water. Another family told us that they already put their home on the market, as they would not raise their children around heavy polluting industries. They feel sold out by their city and county representatives to big money. These families are not anti-growth, they are anti-heavy industry, and there is a major difference. As of Friday, we know that 67% of those households in Norborn-Glebe signed those petitions. This council has the power to set a hearing to accept those blue petitions, and I urge you to listen to your neighbors and what they want. Please set that hearing tonight. Thank you.
Hi, correction, my last name is Kraft. You all know me from Facebook, and it's my maiden name. But I am me.
Thank you.
I'm totally flabbergasted at looking at this. When you see the actual stack and know the work that went into getting these, it's astounding. That cannot be ignored. I spent several weekends over there at the table, helping to gather petitions, asking passersby if they wanted to sign it, explaining what it was all about, as you've already heard. It was remarkable. We had what I call drive-by signings. People would say, "Oh, my God, quick, come here and let me sign," without even asking anyone. They knew what was going on, signed and gone. You know, we had lots of people coming by. We came downtown today just to sign the petition, and they would be devastated that they were in the forewoods of Charlestown, because anyone from Harpers Ferry or the surrounding areas would have gladly signed this, right? But they were so disappointed when they found out that nothing could be done in this instance. So I just wanted to reiterate how much work and how much effort has gone into that and how happy people were to sign this thing. Like they said, some were not against Rockwell at all, but most everyone agreed here, or everyone who signed this, agreed that we should not be paying for that super sewer. That company should put it in. If they want one, build one. Logic dictates. So please reconsider, give us that hearing, and that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Kim Ross. Don Amos.
I was down at the event last Thursday, saw the chief there. He didn't arrest me, but I did walk over the bridge, and the chief in Ranson said, "Anybody doesn't want to get arrested, turn around and go back." And that wasn't my time to get arrested. So I listened. I chose to listen to a man who knew what he was talking about, and I left, okay? So I'm going to talk about listening, which is kind of oxymoronic, but everybody has talked about the petition, but they're saying, "Listen to the people." Now, you know, I'm a meteorologist, and we work with radars, and you see them spinning around and painting the picture. 99% of the time, that radar is listening, okay? It transmits stuffs out, but the majority of the time, it is listening. So I want to combine listening about the petition, having the hearing, think about who you're going to listen to. Because I saw the letter that Mr. Stray wrote to Mr. Hennessy about the possible conflict of interest of Steptoe and Johnson, okay? And I do, in my opinion, there's a lot of conflict of interest. So who are you going to listen to? Choose wisely who you listen to. You're not wasting your energy spinning out, but listen. And I ask you to look closely at what Steptoe and Johnson has been up to for this town and for you all, to pay them and to listen to some of the things that they've said. Read that letter, read the email that's included there, to listen to them, to pay them, to listen to them, and to ignore these. That's oxymoronic, that's moronic, forget the oxy part. Thank you very much, it's always a pleasure.
I think we can all agree that something extraordinary has happened in this town. I can't think of any time when 1,500 people have gotten together and have spoken with one voice to you guys. Did any of you receive 1,500 votes in any election? Has anything in this town ever been agreed on as wholeheartedly as this has been agreed on? And you have the power to do something about it, whether or not Steptoe and Johnson are right. And I'll tell you what, Mr. Talbott called it, he called it, the night you guys agreed to have Steptoe and Johnson be your council. He said, "We should not be having the same people that CTUB have, because one day we will wish there was a firewall here, and there will be a conflict of interest." And now you've got it. And so congratulations, sir, you win the press award of the night. If anybody is listening to them, if anybody is listening to them, instead of the 1,500 people that actually put you guys up here, I'm wondering what's really going on? I've heard that some of the people on this council have said, "I don't believe it. I don't believe that there really are a majority of people who are against this." I mean, I've heard that some of you actually think that. Do you know that in Michael George and Bob Trainor's district, 67% of households signed this? I was out at least seven Saturdays. My husband and I walked the streets of this town. Every time you knocked on a door, people were willing and ready to sign. They were desperate to sign. The saddest thing about it was when the people looked you in the eye and they said, "They won't pay any attention to us anyway." Now, how sad is that? We're all sad because of the political situation in the United States, and we want to point at Washington and say it's their problem, but I'm encouraging you to look in the mirror. How many people in this town are depressed and have given up on politics because of your reaction to this? Maybe you don't have to, in Steptoe and Johnson's evaluation, maybe you don't have to grant a hearing, but could you? Would it be extraordinary for you to do it? Would it be out of the ordinary for you to do it? Yeah, perhaps so. But I think that this calls for that. The children of this town have asked for bread, and you have given them a stone. The children of this town have asked for an egg, and you have given them a serpent. They're not asking you to disagree with your lawyers, they're asking you to do something extraordinary. And we are still asking you to do it. And if we have to compel you to do it with a judge, then we will do that. But is that what you want your constituents to have to say? We had to go to a judge to force our elected officials to hear us? How can you look in the mirror at night? There are people on this council who actually did vote the right way and would be willing to do the right thing, so I know it's possible. Yes, people are asking you to do something extraordinary because they've done something extraordinary. These ladies have done something extraordinary. People who have no business being out and walking around in all weather did that so that you could hear what your constituents had to say. Do something extraordinary tonight. Do it in spite of your lawyers. Do it in spite of the fact that you don't have to. Do it because it's the right thing to do for your people, for the future of this town, for the future of this county. We are not saying that you have to. A judge may tell you you have to, but wouldn't you rather restore the people's hope and trust in this system? There are 1,500 people standing in this room right now, and they're telling you their wishes. They voted for you, are they proud of that?
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to thank everyone for speaking this evening. We're going to go back into our regular order, mayor's report. Another item here is that Charlestown was named the number-one city to live in West Virginia, so we can take that. And that's hard work of this council, past councils, great policing led by Chief Kuchar, wonderful school systems. We have President of the School Board Kathy Skinner here tonight, so I'd like to thank Kathy for all the hard work she does on the school board. Let's now go on to the ward reports. Ward one.
As a newly-appointed member of the Jefferson County Development Authority, I believe I sent out an email, but I just want to reiterate that tomorrow will be the first meeting of the new, the revised Jefferson County Development Authority, 3 o'clock at the Development Authority's office in the Burr Park. The last representative of Bolivar was selected, I guess, two weeks ago, and the group will, the new group will be meeting. So the agenda, oh, yeah, the agenda is on the Jefferson County Development Authority's website, and I am reconfiguring my council website, MikeTolbertCT.com, so that I can post as much Jefferson County Development Authority information as I can. I will post as much as I can, including the agendas and any information we receive. So, see you tomorrow at 3 o'clock.
Very good, thank you. Ward two.
As my time on city council comes to an end, I'd like to take this time to say thank you. Chief, it has been an honor getting to know you and all the officers and staff. Please extend my thanks and appreciation to you and your team for their dedication to serving and protecting our city. Darryl, please extend my thanks to city staff, starting with your management teams. The staff here at City Hall from the third floor down has done a masterful job in supporting this council. I've had to make sacrifices during my tenure on council, and so has my family, and for that, I'm very thankful. Their unconditional support is so graciously appreciated. Lastly, I want to thank the people who I've served with on this council. It has been an honor working alongside of you. My respect and admiration for each of you knows no bounds. If you ever need anything, please give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brittingham.
I do. Two Saturdays ago, May 11th, there was yet another traffic accident at Augustine on Route 340. It's been an accident-prone area, we all know this, I mean, we've all dealt with it. I leave out of there every single day. There's a lot of issues there with congestion with the school. Every time that the school lets out or the school's letting in, there's tons of traffic there. There's obviously some issues with the visibility of those lights, the timing of those lights. Soon, we'll be widening 340 south of there, and that's to encourage more truck traffic, to be able to come up that route, which is going to increase the problem even more. I'm going to spend the next couple of weeks speaking with the city manager to try to see if we can get some time to meet with DOH to make them do something there. This was a 32-year-old man from Virginia that's now passed away. I think, Chief, I think there were eight people injured total in that accident. It was about 30 feet outside of the city of Charlestown, so the county and the state dealt with it, but we had some of our officers there and more, you know, fire trucks and ambulances than I can count. So I would hope that anybody on this city council would also help us if we do need, you know, support to really bang down their door and make them do something there, maybe even commit some funds. I can't imagine how much a blinking white strobe light on the top of that stoplight or some rumble strips cut into the ground could possibly cost, but certainly, something needs to be done there.
Agreed, thank you. Ward three.
Sorry. First of all, I wanted to congratulate the students at Washington High School and Jefferson High School who graduated yesterday, my daughter being among one from Washington High School.
Patriots.
It's an interesting week with high school coming to a close, as well as 12 years of service on council for me. I would also like to extend my thanks to city staff. I've worked with some incredibly fine people, chief of police, your officers, your department. Very much appreciated. So many different people over the years that I'm very grateful, too, for help and support. Also want to thank my colleagues. It's been a pleasure working with all you gentlemen, I've enjoyed it tremendously. You're great people, and I will miss this. Last, I want to thank the citizens of Charlestown for giving me the opportunity to serve on three successive terms. I'm overwhelmed by the support. It's been an absolute privilege to serve you. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward four.
All right. I think we do have a committee report today, was it a finance committee? I got the report out a little bit late. I'm hoping, if you had a chance to take a look at it, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer it. I think you had one, Mike?
Just one, going to the page two, utility tax.
Yep.
Sorry, I've been in Charleston for two weeks, basically.
That's fine.
Have not really been focused on this, but I wanted to kind of refresh my mind, memory, if you could. The utility tax that's currently collected from Charlestown and Ranson ratepayers, that money goes to where? Our general fund, or does that go to CTUB?
Goes into the general fund, and this came up because the PSD customers, and I think the Ranson customers as well, the utility tax for them was not collected. But the Charlestown utilities people, who were Charlestown users the whole time, they were paying, I think it was a 3% tax, if I'm not mistaken, 2%? Okay. I think the state allows you up to 2% or 3%? 2%. Thank you. Keep me straight. But it's kind of a deeper issue because there's not just the utilities from the sewer and the water, but every other utility that is servicing the city. So basically, what we did was we asked staff to go ahead and take a look and see how it's being collected, where that money is going, so we get a handle on how much the utility taxes are collected and what they're used for, as you point out, and then, do we need them? Like, that's really, that's kind of the exercise here for the utility tax. And please, Mike or Chet, speak up if...
Just a couple of clarifying things. So the tax goes to the municipality that the ratepayer lives in. So for instance, we're not collecting a tax from Ranson residents into our general fund. We collect that money for Ranson, but then it's given to their general fund. And that is supposed to be collected from any utility that provides service to the area. So if you have Frontier, if you have Comcast, all those utilities are supposed to be charging whatever rate that that municipality has set. And Ranson doesn't have to set their rate the same as ours, but they do. And then, those monies get given to the general funds for, basically, the purpose of reimbursing the city for providing easements and things like that, is kind of what I think the general gist of what it's, the purpose of it is.
So part of it being the portion of the ratepayers, the PSD, are, live in Charlestown, the remainder live in the county, would we be then responsible if we did the 2% tax to the PSD to then send that money to the county?
Only for people that reside in the municipality, so either Charlestown or Ranson residents, not county residents. The reason that the PSD kind of plays into this is people that were on old PSD sewer but were Charlestown residents, they weren't being charged for the sewer portion of the tax, but they were being charged by the city for the water portion. I'm trying to figure out if it's necessary, how much it should be, do we need it to be 2%? Could it be 1%? What are we using it for? What should we use it for? What are we using it for? What should we use it for?
I only ask because I, I think I've been told that in Berkeley County, the portion of that utility tax is spent to pay for the legal and other things related to monitoring the utility, the Berkeley water and sewer systems in terms of 230 SB 234. And I thought that might be a, a good use of that.
It may be. Right now, it just is going into the general fund. And the idea of looking at all these taxes and fees is to see, first of all, what they're for, where they're going, and do we need them? So that, that's kind of what we're doing here. It's, that's, I just kind of brushed over the utility tax. So we have a good feel for who's paying, what utility is paying that tax or collecting that tax, and which ones aren't, and how much money we're actually getting for the city, for the municipality, and then what is that money going to be used for?
Thank you both.
All right. Any other addition, additional questions for the Finance Committee? All right, let's move on to the City Manager's report.
So just a couple of items from the report. ADA compliant ramps, I just want to, these are the ramps along Washington, North George. They'll go out to Martin Luther King as well. We've been told the contractor is expected in town in the next 30 days. They're finishing up a project in Martinsburg. They assured us there are no bump outs associated with this. And I want to make sure people understand that it's not the design work for the potential roundabout over there, over on Summit Point and what have you. So anyway, so we should expect the contractor in town here in the next 30 days. And Todd Wilt has met with the contractor to begin to understand kind of the project and to help manage it from the city's perspective. Included in your packet is the CTUB water and sewer budgets for fiscal year '20. Just want to make sure people are aware of how the, how the department is spending its money over there. Just thought, hadn't shared that with you, I think, in the, in the past year that I was on the board. Thought it was probably worth sharing now that we have a consolidated system. So it's essentially over a $10 million program right now, our utility system. Pool season starts next week. Good news is that we were optimistic that the kiddie pool will be open this year. It's not been open the last two years. So the maintenance team has done the replumbing work. And they're basically, they need, they need a grate to put in it. Then they'll fill it with water. Keep your fingers crossed that it holds water. So we'll see where we are with the kiddie pool next week. And finally, then, finally, the municipal election early voting finished today. Election Day is on Thursday. City Hall will be closed on Thursday. We've had approximately 155 votes during the early voting process. So Election Day voting, 6:30 to 7:30 here at City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, can I go back to the Finance Committee? Because there's two actual items for the, for the council to consider. One recommendation was, find it real quick, was basically the FOIA fees that we're charging. Basically, the, the recommendation would be continue charging the FOIA fees per the table above, except for the, obviously, the man-hours for clerical and city manager. And also, maybe that should be referred to with the ordinance committee because I think we need to do some revisions there as well. So whether we want to talk about it tonight or put it on the future agenda, that was our recommendation for that one.
Put it on a future agenda?
I had just one more, but...
It may be the homeowners association one?
Westwood Hills.
Yeah, Westwood.
So the sale of utility assets, we're waiting for information on all of them. But the Westwood Hills ones, we're recommending, we're recommending that once we get the engineer's assessment on whether or not it's surplus, a surplus asset, that we recommend deeding that or transferring that, that plot of land back to the homeowners association. Again, that's just something to consider. Maybe it'd be in the next meeting agenda to talk about that.
What is that, Bob? What is the engineer's?
So the CTUB, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the CTUB has, has determined that these assets that they've identified here are surplus. But they actually need an engineer's assessment to, to verify the fact that they are surplus.
Right, because that's in the bond documents. That basically, anytime they release some assets, an engineer certifies that it's surplus.
Right.
And there again, this, this would be very little. But when these assets are sold, where would the funds go?
That's yet to be determined, actually, because there's a couple of different ways that we can do it. But as you can see, the two bigger properties in Patrick Henry and Tuscaloosa Hills, we're asking for assessments or appraisals to give us kind of a market value of what we're looking at.
Isn't the, the one that's out, what's that other, the bigger property, two?
Tuscaloosa?
Where we've had, where there used to be a package plant.
Well, Patrick Henry used to have a package plant. But it doesn't anymore.
It's the one that's kind of to the side of the development out there.
It's in the back corner. There's no immediate access to it, at least at the moment.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the Police Chiefs' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank you again. What an honor to receive that tonight. It was unexpected, and I really appreciate it. To Ann and Nick, thank you for the support that you give in the department, and your commitment to public safety. I really appreciate it. April stats are available on the Mike likes. Anything you need out of that, please don't hesitate to call me. I always like to get to highlight good police work. I've got another one today. Lieutenant Manning investigated and responded to a robbery complaint with one of our local businesses last week. There was items stolen. Two folks were assaulted. By the time, the end of, by the end of his shift, we were able to identify the subject based on our Facebook page. The sheriff's department had a standoff with, with the suspect for about three hours. Then we obtained warrants thereafter. So great police work on their behalf. As mentioned, we did assist ransom, the sheriff's department, with the planned protests that happened last week. There was 24 arrests without incident. No one was hurt. That's a good thing. It was very peaceful. But we did help under our mutual aid to provide assistance to our other agencies out there. Mike and I did talk about the crash that occurred over the, last week, I believe, as well. It was two Saturdays ago. Did a little analysis. I think we've had 33 crashes in that intersection over the past year. Not just my department, but that's combined with the state or county as they would respond. We have kind of, it's a 50-50 split in that intersection. But concerning, we've had two fatalities in that area from Cave Road to Augustine Avenue in a month's time, a little over a month's time. Have spoken with the OH about, is there anything else we could do? I reached out to Public Service Commission as well to see if we could get some of their enforcement branch. They have officers that do come out. So I did see one in the area today. I didn't get, I was unable to make contact with them, but I did see their vehicles out. So hopefully, you know, that'll help. With our staff, we've had them out there trying to slow folks down. So we'll continue that as, as time is allowed. But what I'd like to thank Shepherdstown Police Department and their mayor and their staff, Bob Trainer and I, Councilman Trainer, and I did go over there and tour their parking program. It's one thing that we are looking at, trying to revamp. Nothing imminent, but I think probably in the next couple of months, I think we can come up with a little better program to kind of update where we are currently with our system. Wanted to note that we did send three officers out to Morgan County in support of the search for Ms. Crossman. Unfortunately, tragic end to that, but just wanted to make a note. We did receive an order dismissal in the one litigation that we had in the Hampstead case. Just wanted to make a note of that, granting dismissal in that case. Obviously, we won't go into any details or anything, but it was handed down by the judge. I think that's all I got, so if you need anything, you know where I'm at.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Busy two weeks.
Comes, comes again.
All right. And we also got a kind note from a downtown business owner. The police officer went downtown at night and left a note that they checked the business, and thank you for that as well. Let's move on to unfinished business, 3350, appointment to the Charlestown Utility Board.
All right, so we're, we're bringing this back. I think we've, we've addressed the issues the council had raised at the last meeting. Basically, we have had a resignation from the board. Michael Slover has stepped down to create a position on the board to be filled by the, the county representative. Just keep in mind, though, a little bit, we were going to try to appoint the county, as I understand it, appoint the county representative to a full four-year term. So the next four, or full four-year term opens up on June 1st. And that would be the position that Pete Cubic currently occupies. And then, consistent with our conversation last time, we have posted, or we are seeking letters of interest from engineers who are interested in serving for the balance of the Mike Slover term that we'll bring back to council for consideration at a later meeting. So, so what you have in front of us today is basically an appointment to the Charlestown Utility Board, effective June 1, for our county representative for a four-year term. So the nominees were here last month and did the introductions. What I had suggested last time is to propose that we use a ballot process this time. Did have one council member make sure that it is not a secret ballot. So it's important to note, your ballot is re-recorded. So I've placed your name on it. So again, you're not, you're not voting privately here. But what we're trying to do is make sure that we're not pitting one candidate against the other. A lot of times, what will happen is somebody will move to nominate one of the nominees, and then you vote sort of for or against that nominee. So rather than do that, Robert's Rules of Order allows for this ballot process. So essentially, the way that this works is I have all three candidates' names on the ballot. I also have a none of the above, which is an option. And if you'll look at Article 147, it basically says if council chooses not to select any of the names, then we'll send that back to the county, and the county will send us three new names. So a simple majority is required to basically make the appointment. In a balloting process, the presiding officer does vote in that as well. So before I hand out the ballots, yes?
We had two folks interview last meeting. The third person, have we, is...
We don't have the, Michelle Pitcher? And I've, I've not heard anything back from this individual other than acknowledgement that, that we did send an email and we did place a phone call as well to all of the nominees to be here last meeting.
Thank you.
So is it clear? Are we, are we ready to vote? All right. So here we go. Let's see if this works. All right, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six votes for Jackie Milliron, three votes for Heidi Parker. So that is a majority for Jackie Milliron.
Welcome, Jackie Milliron, and I can't pick anyone better.
All right.
Quite smooth.
There you go. All right, thank you.
All right, let's move on to 3360, Charlestown Utility Board Oversight.
I asked Darryl to bring this back up on the agenda. I guess, kind of to go back from where we left off the last time. I don't really know how much we're at liberty to talk in public session, considering the agreement that we did vote on and sign with the Charlestown Utility Board, basically saying that this would only be discussed, you know, with the city council unless certain stipulations that mostly deal with the courts and things like that are met. So I'll wait, but I'm probably going to be making a motion to go into executive session unless anybody else wants to say anything prior about it.
Only FYI, Darryl, we didn't receive any, from the request for proposals for...
Yes, we have not.
Legal services.
Yeah, for Utility Council, no.
I, I, several proposals have been given to me about how we might be able to, to push that, so I'll talk to you. No, not again. Oh, it's the second. I broke his pen.
Pants, so be careful, man, okay? All right.
Okay. Okay.
All right, anything else before?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session and discuss.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
All right.
To direct city staff to ask that the Charlestown Utility Board reexamine FOIA-exempted documents in the Jefferson County Vision FOIA request and deliver unto the Jefferson County Vision any documents that may not meet FOIA exemption requirements, and that the city manager report the results of that request back to city council.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Again, I think I'm concerned about the interaction of 147 and 234 with the firewall. I think, I believe CTUB should turn over those documents, any that are not privileged. But SB 1234 is, is clear. It's, it's this council's oversight of that, of our utility board. And I am concerned that we should not be telling CTUB, which has its own legal counsel, recommending or suggesting to CTUB what they should be doing outside of the parameters of the oversight of those three issues as given to this council by SB 234. Like I said, I do agree that they do, that they should turn over any documents that, that are, are not fully privileged. But I, I think we should not be directing them, suggesting to them that we do this. My other concern is that the future, there will come a time when this council does have a conflict with CTUB, and we will tell CTUB to do something. And CTUB may say, well, we're going to refer back to this precedent and basically say no to you. And I'm concerned that we make sure that we have mechanisms in place or that we don't use this mechanism to tell them. Something that they can tell us no one, where we have oversight of them. The, the, the whole concept of oversight is to be able to say, we're oversighting you, therefore, we want you to do something. It's not, we're oversighting you and we suggest you do something. So I, I'm not in favor of this resolution, the way in which it's written.
And I would just respectfully disagree that I think this is exactly the, the type of oversight that this city council should be using over any city department that is using taxpayer funds that, you know, we're required to make sure that we're good stewards of, and that this is... and that this is exactly what that oversight should look like.
I also think it's a responsibility for this entity, if a city department is not following the law or maybe misinterpreting laws, it's our responsibility to point that out to them. And I think that's all this will do.
I kind of agree with both of you, that's what's weird. First of all, I don't think it's technically a city department, it's pseudo-city department. And they also don't use taxpayers' funds to fund sewer. They use sewer funds to pay for sewer. But I do feel we do have an oversight to just suggest that they should reevaluate what is happening. They don't have to do it, they could tell us no, and then that's it, it ends for our case. We've done our due diligence, we asked them nicely, we communicated to them nicely that they might want to do that.
I would just say, I don't know if it would end at that point, I think it would be up to the city council.
Well, it would end for our council, yeah. The council would have another decision, but I feel that, at this point, that I don't know what we would do at that point. It'd have to be reevaluated, I guess.
Well, keep in mind, you remember you've got the power of the ordinance, one forty-seven. So, I mean, if you felt like the council, if you felt like the core organization was not responding in a way that you wanted them to, at the end of the day, that's your authority. Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes? All right, we're going to move on to thirty-three fifty-one, Plan for Filling Mayoral Vacancy.
Mayor, I'm going to ask again that I be recused from discussion and vote on this topic. Depending on what happens and what council decides, being an applicant or a candidate otherwise, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to be involved in crafting the process by which that...
Certainly understood.
But if I could just say, we don't have a process, though. So I think...
Correct, I'm simply trying to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
And I commend you for that, but you're also taking a lot of experience away from the table here.
Now, that's selfish there, but...
Well, I appreciate that, it's his call, he does not have to recuse me, that's up to you, so...
We're not voting on who's going to be the mayor. We're voting, we're...
I understand, but if Ed, for whatever reasons, doesn't feel comfortable, I certainly understand, so...
I would just reiterate that, once again, is a personal decision as to wanting to recuse, but that doesn't preclude any member of the city council that takes part in this conversation.
I am attempting to avoid any appearance of impropriety in the future.
Thank you, Ann. All right, so as a follow-up to our last meeting, council had asked if I could put together a process for filling the mayoral vacancy. So I've included a proposed plan for doing that. Let me say, I did talk to our councilman Mike Funk about it. I also reached out to the West Virginia Secretary of State's General Counsel for their Elections Division as well, to make sure I understood from a state perspective what we could and could not do. And I also spoke with the West Virginia Municipal League as well, to see what they said other cities in West Virginia had done on this front. So with that, just a couple of reminders. One is, we do have a section in the city charter that basically speaks to the filling of a vacancy, a vacancy in any office. It basically is your responsibility as the county to do that for the period until the next general election. Keep in mind, then, we do have a city ordinance that basically refers you to the state code, and the state code essentially reads the same as the charter, except it has one minor addition to it. It adds the language that "it shall be filled from among the eligible residents of the municipality." So whereas the charter doesn't necessarily, it says it must be filled by somebody who's eligible to fill the role, but the other one basically speaks to "from the residents of, the eligible residents of the municipality." So with that in mind, and with the goal, I think, to identify the best possible candidate, what I had done is tried to set out a process that would at least take letters of interest from anyone in the municipality, and at the end of the day, the council would decide who is the most qualified. If the council chooses to select somebody from the city council to do that, that person still meets the test, which is a resident of the city of Charlestown and somebody who is eligible to hold office. So you could, at the end of the day, if that's what you decided to do, you could choose from among them. But again, I think there's value in at least seeing what the full pool of potential applicants might look like.
Just a point of order here. You said that the city charter, like the West Virginia Code says, "Unless otherwise provided by charter provisions or ordinances," right? In the West Virginia Code, it said, "Unless otherwise provided by charter provision or ordinance." Is that referring to the city charter?
It is, that's right, that's right.
Okay, all right. So that would be, in this case, unless it was in conflict with the law, that would kind of be the trump card, as far as...
Well, that's right. I mean, basically what it's saying, unless there is nothing in your charter, right, then you refer to the state law. But then, actually, after talking to Mike Funk a little bit about this in the West Virginia Secretary of State's office, there is that issue of how to read the charter and how to read the state code, or how to read your city ordinance, that if they are in conflict, which these are not, it's the state code that prevails. But there's also a section that basically says, if they are very similar, it still doesn't matter, the state code prevails. So the point is, I think eight-five-ten, which basically says, "It's filled from among the eligible residents of the municipality," is basically, you know, more instructive of the process than our charter. Our charter is just a little bit narrower in terms of how it's written.
But, so you're basically kind of saying, though, as long as it's a city resident, this council's free to appoint that person to fill the mayor's role?
Yes, as long as they're qualified to be the, yes, as long as they meet the qualifications to be a mayor as well.
And so I think I'm now, I really liked talking about this, I like throwing the options on the table so that we can all see this, and so that the, I hope that the members that are going to be elected to the city council are paying attention and looking at these options. There are, you know, more options than just simply doing the posting of vacancies like we would do a board. I think there's two others that we could appoint, an elected member of the city council, or we could have a special election. Those are options, I'm not saying I'm in favor of one or the other, or any of those three. But now, I think if we go to starting this process before the next city council, I'm more on Councilman Segaliffa's concern that we are now dictating the process before the next city council is seated. So I like some of the things that are laid out, I think it's enough for us to think about on our own prior to that happening, and for the upcoming city council members too. But I don't like the idea of dates and doing things before that city council's seated.
I agree.
That was kind of the point I was going to make as well, if we're going to leave it up to the new city council, some of these things are going into action before we even sit. Mr. Mayor, do we have an actual date of your...
It will most likely be probably the week of June seventeenth.
Okay, so I don't know if it would help, but that would be nice if we had that in writing. I'm not trying to pin you down, but it'd be nice if we had that around, because that would be a document that we would start working off of.
And I understand what you're saying, and I think what the goal of the timeframe, though, is to try to get someone appointed as soon as possible, and I get it.
And simply, I was just saying, if we agree that, basically, it's selected from among the eligible residents of the municipality, let's get started on at least developing the pool. And that was the reason to start it, I picked June first, it could be any date that you want it to be. But, you know, the idea was, let's at least put it out there, say that it's, you know, something the council will consider and will have the pool. I mean, if at the end of the day, the council decides they don't want to do the interview process, or they don't want to, you know, they want more time...
Yeah, I guess let's just fill the pool with water first.
I think it just kind of ties the new council's hands a little bit, though, to doing this process if we've already put it in motion.
I guess right now, I guess what I'm saying is, you can always, right now, let's start getting, filling the pool, I guess, is what we'll say. But you can delay, you can, you know...
What I'm saying is, what if the three new members that come in all like the idea of a special election? Well, we've already kind of started this.
You can't do that, you can't do that.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a very limited option for doing a special election. In fact, the West Virginia Supreme, or the West Virginia Secretary of State's General Counsel told me, basically, the only reason that provision is in there is if a municipality doesn't have something in its charter, or it doesn't reference the state code, that they wanted to make sure there was a process for doing that. But the special election basically says, city council has to receive a petition of twenty percent of, and I believe it's the eligible voters, I have to go back and look at that again. If it's in receipt of a petition, you know, then it begins this special election process.
That's the only provision for a special election?
That's right, that's right.
Regardless, I mean, I still am of the mindset that we shouldn't start the process until the new city council. I mean, and it kind of goes back to the conversation about the utility board. What's the first process with Mike Slover was Mike Slover resigning. And so, the mayor hasn't resigned yet. I just, I don't like the idea of starting a process without the new city councils.
However, I will always go back to my favorite subject, which is that this charter that this town is running under is very old, should have been updated decades ago.
I can't do anything about that.
And this process, I know, but this process, because I'm agreeing with you, Nick, this process should have been spelled out decades ago, as to how we do a transfer of authority. There is the concept of stare, what's that, stare decisis? Where the prior decision stands. We have done this election, or we've done this election process before when we selected Councilmember George. I think even though this effectively is my last night on council, I don't think it is bad for us to say, "This is how we are going to run this process." Because this is the way we should, it should have been done, it should have been set out a long time ago. And I'm concerned that every time we come up with one of these situations where something's not spelled out in the charter, that we go and redirect, we recreate the wheel.
You remember when we did fill that seat with Ward Four with a very capable Councilman George here? The seat was vacant, we did that.
Right.
When we devised what we were going to do. I mean, I'll go with the majority on this, but I think that two weeks is not bad to wait. If we really want the new council to decide how to do it, I think we should wait before we, at least wait for the letter of resignation with the date.
I agree.
All right.
I don't agree, I think we ought to get this thing going now. It's already indicated, he's not going to be here on June seventeenth. So, you know, if you look at the, August the fifth, we're going to be two months, well, all summer, without a mayor. So you can get it done now, as far as the new council coming in, well, yeah, there's going to be a few of them coming in. But they're coming into other issues, too, so it's...
Along the same...
Have to deal with it, that's just it.
Along the same lines as Councilman Heinz, just think of your next pro temp as well, because, I mean, you're extending that person, you know, until you find a replacement. So just keep that person in mind. I completely understand everyone what you're saying, you know. I don't think we're necessarily setting up the framework, we're just sort of getting the ball rolling, you know. And from there, you know, you guys can make, you know, make any adjustments or changes, or how you want to appoint, but right now, just trying to just get the ball rolling.
Can I ask what changed for mine? Last city council meeting, you wanted to table this until, and not discuss it at all, until the city council was seated.
I agree, and I think it was, it is a lot to put on your pro temp, okay? Especially if someone really doesn't want to be pro temp for that period of time. You know, running all the meetings and stuff, it's fun, yes, I had fun doing it, yes.
Yeah, but the pro temp gets picked with the new council anyway.
Correct, but you're, but without a mayor, you're extending that pro temp. I don't know, it's just, I just think of that person, and I don't even know...
I don't think somebody should run for pro temp if they're not prepared to sit the mayor's seat.
Fair enough, fair enough, but... So I think you guys found your pro temp next term, but anyway.
So maybe as a compromise, I mean, would we, we don't spell out the rest of the schedule, maybe we basically just say, you know, "We'll post for thirty days, anyone who expresses a letter of interest," and leave it at that, and the new council will set the schedule thereafter.
Man, so how does that advertisement work, I mean?
So basically, the city of Charlestown is seeking...
Just curious who wants to be mayor.
Not curious, seeking, you know, individuals who are interested in serving as the mayor. You know, to be qualified, you need to have A, B, and C, the term is for two years. You know, and then I said, basically, they would submit a reason for applying, as well as the goals for when they, you know, while they're in office. Qualifications, work and professional experience in education, so basically the types of things you would see on a resume, very similar to what I think you'd asked for when you were filling the council seat. And then the other difference here, and the West Virginia Municipal League suggested this, is that we run it as an advertisement, too, like a class-two advertisement, that we not just, you know, put something out on our Facebook page and our website, but we really, you know, do the, again, do the, sort of the legal notification process, too. So I was trying to build that into what we were doing here, so...
But your proposal proposes that we don't post a schedule...
Well, I was going to say, maybe that's what we do, simply just say, "Well, you know, between the June first and July fifth, anyone interested in serving as the mayor, please submit, you know, these materials, and when I get them, I'll hand them to the new council, and we'll start to sort through a process."
I mean, either way, the process is going to be the same, I mean, there's not many options that we have to do this.
To advertise, to advertise.
To advertise. After that, it's just, you know, that's up to the new council. But just to say, there's going to be a vacancy available.
Yeah, just like I said, I'm not comfortable with setting dates to it, I mean...
Yeah, we can start advertising, on fall four, start advertising.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and move that we launch the appointment process as stipulated, we'll leave it at that. The appointment process, meaning the ways of advertising for the position, what we're looking for, and I just had it and I lost it. So the, I'm sorry, the announcement process.
Thank you, the announcement process, okay.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to give clarification on what the announcement process is.
All right, so I'll move that the city clerk will post the advertised vacancy on the city website and Facebook page. The clerk will also advertise the vacancy. Basically, the advertisement process. He will launch the advertisement process, period.
Could you...
Are you saying the appointment process?
No, in here, in the...
No, the announcement process. The announcement process, it's...
In terms of...
Page thirty-nine. Announcement process.
Just for clarification, could you just use staff's proposed plan as put forth, their proposed May twentieth staff's plan on the appointment process?
The announcement process. We're not, I don't want to get into the appointment, we're just going to get, so yes, yes, all right, so how about this? Let's start over. I move that staff begin the announcement process as stipulated in the filling mayoral vacancy proposed plan dated May twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
I amend my second.
Fantastic.
And so, discussion, I would, I would say that then we should strike the last sentence of the announcement process, because the announcement process, the last sentence gives a timeframe on how long somebody has to submit their application.
Well, we have to have an end date, you can't say open-ended.
I agree, and I don't think that this city council should be making that end date. I mean, if he did it tomorrow, that would put the end date June twentieth. Three days after the new council gets seated, and they really don't get any say.
But you're not starting us till the June first.
Well, I mean, that's what I propose as a schedule, but that's not what's outlined in the announcement process, as...
Right.
How about we say till July fifth?
Yeah.
What, from tomorrow till July fifth?
No, whenever, whenever the vacancy is announced, till July fifth.
Okay, yeah, all right.
So again, I think we're just making decisions that we should have the entire seated city council that's going to be appointing that new mayor here to make.
I would just say, at the very least, can't we just give a letter of resignation with a date? Can't we, can't we work off of that? I mean, I'm just...
It'll be coming soon. So, so what are you suggesting, Bob? Are you suggesting that once we get the letter with a date, that will trigger the beginning of the announcement process?
That's what I think.
Okay.
Well, maybe Councilman Gilford could amend his motion to say that it starts when we get a letter.
Only because Bob is wearing a jacket and tie, I will amend appropriately.
I appreciate that.
Amend my second.
I'll make a motion then to table the conversation till the seating of the next city council.
Slowly, hang on.
Do we have to vote on this?
Well, no, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All right.
Discussion.
And we have a, well, and then we have a motion to table. So a motion to table does take precedent.
Yes, you have to do the vote.
If there's a second.
Yeah. You can motion to table whenever.
Yeah, you did it anytime. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I second the table.
Okay. Then now, we have a vote.
All right.
Motion to table.
All right, let's vote on the motion to table. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
One, two, three, four. So motion fails.
Motion failed. All right, so we're back to the motion that's on the table, which is to initiate the announcement process upon the receipt of the resignation, or to be posted no sooner than the date of the resignation.
Right. I think, yeah.
Right, yeah. That's what I was thinking, yes.
Yes. If Scott decides to stay until October, we wouldn't be...
Yes, correct.
Correct.
All right, so no sooner than the date of resignation.
If I advertise until the resignation...
Until we get a resignation.
Right. So if, if the mayor said to me tomorrow, my effective resignation date is June 10th, so no sooner than June 10th would we initiate the process to seek letters of interest. So we'd open it up for 30 days, we'd do the advertisements, blah, blah, blah. So that would all be starting to happen before the new council is seated, but then the process for what they do with the letters is a decision that the next council will make.
I'm good with that.
The mayor may not resign before the new council is seated and then they could...
Right, if the mayor chooses to, you know...
They could stop it and restart it.
You don't leave until the 17th, well, we got a new council. We got a new council now. All right, are we ready to, any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Two noes.
Okay.
All right.
You thought we'd get Ann?
Yes.
I forgot about Ann.
We forget her. Just wait a few more minutes.
We did that once with Nick, if you remember.
That's right.
He wasn't too happy.
Yeah. I'm not bitter at all.
All right. All right, let's move on to 3361, City Council Meeting Schedule.
I move we approve the city council meeting schedule as suggested by staff.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, mayor, point of order, I guess, that's the, citizens tonight brought us a rather large documents, a set of documents, and I believe regardless of what we feel, that we should at least respond to those documents. And I go back and I reference, regardless of how you feel, the very last sentence of the legal letter that was sent on May 16th says, "While the city council and the building commission certainly can receive the petition and consider it as a reflection of the view of a portion of the public, the presentation of the petition does not mandate action by four-fifths majority of either governmental body." Now, ignore, I'll ignore the, the last half of that, but this council can receive, according to our legal counsel, it can receive the petition and it can consider that as a reflection of this council's view and it can hold a public hearing. Even if the majority of the council decides it does not want to change the decision that we made in the case, it would at least hear the public's concern in a formal type of way. And I would ask if we could have some discussion on that and possibly put that on the...
We, we, we can.
It's not on the agenda.
Right, it's not on the agenda. What we could do is we can have a procedural discussion about it. So we could talk about scheduling it for a future meeting, if we wanted to do that.
That's why I did the point of order. I just wanted to figure out where...
Yeah. I mean, what I would, at least my initial reaction, it's just mine, is that, again, there's only one other time we will pull this group together to deal with city business outside of the election. That'll be the evening of May 31st. Again, I assume we will not want to cover substantive matters at that meeting, just time-sensitive matters that need to be resolved, which then makes the first meeting of the new council is maybe the first opportunity to at least have something in front of the next council to review the request. So that would be June 17th. I suspect members feel similar that, again, it's, June, May 31st would not be, I think, a meeting to have a lot of substantive matters on it.
Well, that would be the last, that would be, for three of us, that would be our last council meeting. Therefore, this is one where I kind of think maybe we do need to kick it into the next council, because then the decisions that are made by the departing folks, you know, no decision would be made that night regardless, but this is maybe something that the new council would have to, that should look at and have all, full, all of them should sit and listen to.
Agreed.
It's a difficult one for me. I'm not sure which way I go, because I agree that the new council is going to be the one continuously, you know, taking over kind of the route line to a project and this discussion and the petition discussion and if there was a public hearing and if there was another vote. While at the same time, expediency is important, because we are kind of committing ourselves to funds and, well, CTUB is expending funds on this project, I mean, every single day. So it makes it harder and harder to change that vote every time that we're spending money on it, because that increases the repercussions of it. But I think that the idea of the next city council weighing in on that outweighs that So I agree with you.
All right, well, it seems like we're going to let the next city council make the decision on the petitions. Let's move on to Approval of Bills, 3371, Bills for Approval, May 20th, Council Meeting.
I move we approve the bills. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn? Second. Yeah, adjourned. Thank you, everyone.